Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you have enjoyed the 2013 NAACP Leadership 500 Summit, please give a round of applause. Before we begin, I want to recognize our chairman, Rosalynn M. Brock. Please give her a round of applause. So, we are very, very excited about today's program. Entitled, "Our Town Hall Meeting Entitled 'The 21st Century Black Woman.'" I am Nicholas Wiggins, Manager, External Relations and Special Projects for the NAACP. And it is my honor once again to serve as your presiding officer for this session. We have a very special performance that we like to do to open up our town hall meeting this afternoon, this morning. And it comes from Khloe and Halle Bailey. They are two young girls who are trying to impact the world with their talents. Khloe and Halle have performed on The Ellen Show twice, have acted in movies and TV with actors such as Angela Bassett, Queen Latifah, Tyler Perry, Beyonce, Courtney Vance, and many others. Some of the projects that Khloe and Halle have been involved in are Meet the Browns, House of Pain, Defying Temptations, The Last Holiday, Gospel Hill, Joyful Noise, and Disney's Let It Shine. Music is a very important part of the Khloe and Halle experience. Khloe plays the piano while Halle plays the guitar. They are singers and songwriters with classic voices and melodic harmonies. At only 14 and 13 years old respectively, they are currently touring and happily learning and growing in their craft. Expect to see much bigger things in the future. We are so excited to have Khloe and Halle with us this morning to open us up with a performance. Please give them a round of applause.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
You all look so beautiful. I just have to stop and tell you guys that. Like, everyone is so bright and beautiful today.
Oh, my gosh, this is so cool.
And it's so beautiful today as well, right, guys?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Oh, my goodness, we love Florida. We got here yesterday and it was just beautiful.
Oh, my gosh, so pretty.
And let me tell you guys something, I am feeling great. I'm feeling good.
Halle, are you feeling good?
I am feeling very, very good. Are you guys feeling good? Awesome. Birds flying high, you know how I feel. Sun in the sky, you know how I feel. Breeze going over, you know how I feel. It's a new dawn, it's a new day, it's a new life for me. And I'm feeling good. Hey. I'm feeling good.
I'm feeling good. Fish in the sea, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
Running free, oh, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
Close them on a tree, you know how I feel. It's a new dawn, it's a new day, it's a new life. And I'm feeling good.
Are y'all feeling good?
Woo.
Oh, yeah. Dragonflies going over, oh, you know what I mean, don't you know? Breeze going over, oh, you know how I feel. Sleep in peace when the day is done, oh, you know how I feel. In this old world, it's a new world, it's a bold world for me, for me, yeah.
For me.
For me. Oh, yeah. Birds flying high, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
Sun in the sky, oh, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
Birds flying high, oh, you know how I feel. It's a new dawn, it's a new day, it's a new life. Stars when you shine, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
When you're just a bird, oh, you know how I feel.
You know how I feel.
Home is mine, and I know how I feel. It's a new dawn, it's a new day, it's a new life.
It's a new sun down, it's a new day, it's a new life. It's a new day, it's a new day, it's a new life for me. And I'm feeling good.
I'm feeling good.
I'm feeling good.
Are y'all feeling good? I really hope so.
I am.
I'm feeling good, 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 good. I'm feeling good, 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 good. I'm feeling good. Thank you all so much.
Khloe and Halle. We had the opportunity we had the opportunity at last year's Leadership 500 Summit to have a very enlightening conversation entitled "Protecting Our BMWs." And that stood for "Black Men Walking." And we had this wonderful conversation about black men and black male empowerment that we thought we should have another conversation this year, talking about black female empowerment. But we'd like to recap what we discussed last year before we start this conversation. So please look toward the screens.
This panel, as has indicated, will address a variety of perspectives when it comes to dealing with the criminal justice system, our interactions with it as people of color, especially African-American people, the legal precedents that have been set, that have been deeply entrenched in the history of this country, that the Trayvon Martin situation merely exposes. We have got to have a total reorientation within the African-American community to help our young brothers to understand that anything that you do participatorially to put yourself in that predicament, you are actually punkin' out. Because that is the system designed to enslave you. And so you're not strong because you do that. And we've got to, I think, develop an agenda to depopulate the plantation. There are state by state by state, there ought to be an agenda to depopulate the plantation. We've got to address that very aggressively.
So if the public is going to assist us and the government is going to assist us, then we have to up our public schools, we have to get better education, we have to align ourselves to be on par with these white kids and these groups into a society that trains you to do better and to train you differently.
Look, I'm a professor at a predominantly white school, and I know that white folk ain't superior intellectually to black people. No disrespect, I'm just saying. Having said that, but they are not treated in the same way. So why is it that we're still caught up in a cycle of trying to, quote, "prove a humanity" that is exaggerated among white brothers and sisters and degraded among African-American people?
America as a whole has never really confronted race as an issue. I mean, never really confronted it. Race and criminality have been linked from America's inception with slavery. When you think about what slavery was, force bonded to black people, it was a crime to not work, it was a crime to read, it was a crime to leave. That was a link between race and criminality.
It's true that there are some positive consciousness in hip-hop, but the problem is you ain't gonna get no record deal talking positive.
Leadership doesn't start at a certain age. You can start as soon as you choose to be a leader, as soon as you choose to be a voice. And be that voice that changes your whole, you know, your whole generation, you know? You can do that. I've watched leaders, and don't be a follower.
Very good, Ben. Bone, you want to kind of say something? I'm gonna keep it simple, and I'm looking at you, and, you know, the mere fact you got up and spoke, because a lot of youngsters here are 15, the mere fact you got up, you're a leader. I think we all in this room should tell you, man, we love you. I mean, when you go back, you know, you got a whole room of people that said, man, they love me. And I think we really should tell him, there you go. We love you, brother. We love you, man. We love you, man. We love you. Love you. Take that home with you. Brother Bone, yeah.
So as you can see, we had a wonderful conversation last year, and we are looking forward to our conversation this year. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our panelists and bring our panelists to the stage. And I'm just going to call them by name. Their names speak for themselves, their bios speak for themselves, and they will introduce themselves on the panel. So first, I'd like to bring Renell Daniels to the stage. Please give her a round of applause.
Okay, Nicole, we're gonna be coming to you in
And then we have Ms. Anna Aponte Curtis.
As soon as he introduces you, we're gonna be going live.
Dr. Gwendolyn Boyd. Ms. Glinda Carr. On the screen, Nicole Lyons. And our moderator for this morning, Ms. Silly Abrams.
We got a full room. Is my mic on? Okay. Oh, okay. All right then. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, wow, what a beautiful group of people. Thank you so much for coming out this evening, and thank you to the NAACP for giving me this wonderful opportunity to be a part of this discussion about "The 21st Century Black Woman." Tom Brokaw had declared "The 21st Century" as "The Century of the Woman." And what I found as a writer, as a cultural critic, we live in a society today that is extremely fixated on celebrity, and little attention is given to the hard work and the sacrifice and the accomplishments of women such as our esteemed panelists, but also to all of you. And so what I wanted to do was to start the conversation today and to open it up to the panelists and ask, what is your take on black women and as we are being portrayed currently in media? And how does that influence the work that you do?
Okay. I'll start, since nobody else wants to start. But I am a meeting planner, have been with the NAACP for 47 years. And it's great now, but it has not always been great. I think that the media portrays African-American women, and women in general, not just African women, as maybe a secondary role. And we need to stop portraying ourselves, women, as first-world. We're models, we're mothers, we're workers, we're employers, we're employees. And so I think that if we, as women, get together and start demanding certain standards just like the men have, we will be portrayed similar to the men. That's my goal, anyway, is, and I love diversity. I think that we're all one. We're all women. We all have the same problems irrespective of our color, of our background. And so I think that if we come together as women and stop looking ourselves as different women, but just women, we can move us forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think I would like to approach that question not from our entertainment representation, but the representation of us in the news, right? And it's not that there's a representation of us in our issues in the news as black women, there's a lack of our voices in mainstream, day-to-day media coverage around politics and issues that we care about. The Women's Media Center recently released this report called "Name It, Change It." And it talks about when there are issues, for example reproductive health, oftentimes those issues are being covered by white men. And if it is being covered by women, it's covered by white women. And there is a very clear lack of black women's voices talking about policy issues on many of our mainstream network and cable news stations.
Well, talking about policy and how there's historically been this division between white feminists, black feminism, womanism, how do you feel, do you feel that it's possible for us to work collaboratively as we move forward on these different political agendas?
I heartily believe that, you know, the winning coalition is a coalition of women and particularly people of color. Evidence of that is the 2012 election cycle. What the Republicans said, that the only way they're going to be able to win national elections is to pull together a coalition of women and people of color. So at the center of that, what is that? It's black women's power has wholeheartedly leaped and bounds in this 2012 election cycle. The U.S. Census just came out with their election results, and it showed, and I'm sure you've seen the data, that blacks had the highest turnout than we've ever had in any presidential election cycle. So that shows a growing political imprint. But at the center of that, when you look at the data closely, it was black women that drove those numbers, right? Black women are 70% of the black electorate. And you know, when you fire up a black woman in our households, not only are we voting, everyone in that household is voting, our neighbors are voting, our coworkers are voting, our churches are voting. The other piece of that is, black women voted 98% for the president. We need to figure out who those other 2% and what did they do? Did they just skip over the line? Or who did they vote for? But it shows that there's this growing impact. And I think white progressive organizations are very clear that they want to be engaged and are beginning to invite us more and more to the table. But when you start talking about the feminist movement, I mean, we're in the third wave of the feminist movement. And the third wave was supposed to be about engaging younger people and women of color. And again, in this 2012 election cycle, it shows that the only way we're going to really attack issues that are a concern to our communities is by inviting a diverse table of women to talk about the issues.
I think just to follow up on that issue, to go back to the question, we don't know our own power. The statistics have been given 98%, but we don't demand a seat at the table. If we were 98% of anybody getting elected, they should automatically have us at the table. And so we need to be a part of policy discussions, we need to have a seat at the table, because we don't need anybody else there speaking for us. We need to speak for ourselves. And certainly, we're articulate enough, we can communicate clearly enough what our issues are, we do know what they are. And just to go back to your original question about how we're portrayed in the media, is we, as black women, need to stop accepting the craziness and foolishness that they're putting out there that says this is who we are. Because the moment we stop, they will stop. We support it, because commercials are what makes it run. And so we need to watch the commercials or the programming that is negatively attributed to us and say, "We will not support this product. We'll find another product, no matter how long we've been using it, no matter what it is, we will find another product until you get the message. Take it off, take it down, because this does not represent who we are."
And to that point, Dr. Boyd, I wanted to dovetail into our economic empowerment and having a true understanding of our consumer spending power. Now, as you just shared, advertising is what drives these shows. And I've heard this term used called "the guilty pleasure." I watch these ratchet shows because it's a guilty pleasure. And even if it's not something that you would admit publicly to watching, even if you're doing it in the privacy of your home, it's registering. Your watching it is registering with the networks. So there is no such thing as a hidden guilty pleasure. So with that being said, if we were to harness our consumer spending power, educate our younger generations on the true, the breadth of what it means to be a black woman, and give younger people an opportunity to have a clear path, see a real, clear path towards success, I think that would also be a huge part of creating that change.
Because watching says to our young people, "We condone it."
Absolutely.
Even though you call it a guilty pleasure, whatever kind of pleasure you want to call it, you're sending a message to the young people in your house and the young people who you're influenced by, that this is okay. I agree with this, you know, rendering of who black women are. And so we need to change that message to say that African-American women are everywhere and we're doing everything. We're pilots, we're CEOs, we're engineers, we're architects, we're doctors, we're race car drivers. We are whoever we want to be, and we need to never surrender ourselves to an image who is less than. I mean, we have people on television who are famous just because they're stupid. Yeah, I said it. And I'll stand up to it.
Absolutely.
They stand for nothing. There's no social justice, nothing about their message, except, "I'm stupid, you know, watch me be stupid."
I like to spend money, I like to wear Luby's.
So watch me be stupid.
I gotta find me a man, absolutely.
And we have a race car driver, we have engineers, we have meeting planners, we have people who are doing great things, who can get zero time, zero messaging to our young people that you can be great. And so we have to use these opportunities to say to our young people that we are everywhere and we are doing everything, and you, as a young African-American woman, can be whatever you want to be.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just to kind of move this discussion forward, one thing that you never see on mainstream television is this idea of sisterhood and service. That is completely missing from reality television. And so I would love to hear from the panel how sisterhood and service has influenced the work that you do.
Well, for me, in 2003, I made a commitment to transition from the for-profit environment to the nonprofit environment, because I really wanted to do work, at the end of the day, that would deliver some kind of social impact. So for me, while I had a great job and I was making an amazing salary, and my friends and family often ask me now, "Well, why did you leave that firm to transition into nonprofit?" Well, it was because I had a tug, a very, very, very strong tug. I would say it was more than a tug, it was probably a pull, that at the end of the day, that it was not enough just to go to work and to earn a salary and not do anything that was going to favorably impact the life of a young girl or a young boy, considering my background and how I grew up and the challenges that I faced. And I just felt that it was my responsibility as an individual, as a young woman, to do something that was going to make a clear difference in the life of someone else, whether or not I was able to see them, touch them, or feel them. I had to know that my work made a difference in their lives.
Okay, and for me, it's a little different. I was born and raised in New York, I'm Hispanic-American, and when I came to the NAACP, and I'm gonna be honest, I didn't even know I was being discriminated against, because it was so hidden. I went to a, you know, a school, all-girls school, and everybody was there, black, white, green, we were all together. But from the NAACP, then, I saw people like Merle Evers Williams, Althea Simmons, I worked with men like John Morcell and Roy Wilkins, Henry Lee Moon, our chairman, who I met before she could even vote. But these were women that showed me that there was a way that Hispanic-Americans and African-Americans could work together. And I love the NAACP, I'm gonna be honest with you, and it's been good and it's been bad. But the NAACP has opened so many doors, not only for me, but for other folks, in Hispanic-Americans, African-Americans, women. And so I decided that I would stay there and just see how far I can go in the civil rights movement. And my first march, obviously, was a silent march in Washington, D.C. And I'm gonna be honest with you, my job was to watch this coffin, this empty coffin that they gave me to watch and put in the Capitol steps. And it was the first time I had seen a sea of so many people coming together for one movement. And that just kept me focused, and that's where I have been, and that's where I have transitioned into meeting planning. And believe it or not, when we say meeting planning, it's just not delivering a meal or making sure you have a hotel room, but it's ensuring that we deal with hotels and convention centers, that their faces and their employees match the... Well, what we ask for is, let's see, your employee, what do they look like? Because if I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, and I go to a hotel, I want to see people that look like me representing the hotel. And I'll sit across the room from a non-African-American, but they won't understand me. It took this hotel three days to understand that we like collard greens with turkey egg bones. I mean, that's the truth. I mean, I'm just trying to be honest with you, that's the way it is. But now they're gonna put it on their menu.
You shoot straight from the hip.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's no black, there's no gray area. It's either gonna be black, or it's gonna be white, or we're gonna get together and it's gonna be tan. That's just the way it is. But for me, the NAACP has taught me that it's not just always black, and it's not just always white, and that we, as women, have to cross a lot of barriers, not only the color barriers, but the male barriers. And we're still doing it today, but we're getting there. We're just taking big steps now, we took baby steps, now we're taking bigger steps.
I think definitely the issue of sisterhood and service resides in all of us, because we all know that we didn't get here by ourselves.
That's right.
It's the story of the turtle. If you see a turtle on a fence, you know the turtle didn't get there by itself. Somebody helped it get there and so forth. Whoever you are, whatever you do, somebody pushed you, encouraged you, helped you get, you know, where you are. And that's the one thing that we have to remember, as successful as we are, and we applaud, you know, like my sister, Renell, who gave up, you know, her high-power job, but some of us need to keep our high-power jobs, because people who are under us need to see us in leadership. So we need, some of us need to stay and know that it is possible for us to get there. I'm an engineer by profession, and for the first 20 years of my career, I rode submarines. And I was the only woman on the boat. I won't even go there, because I have to shoot you if I told you all about that. But you have to be secure in who you are in any environment you walk in, and say that if I stand here representing every African-American woman in the world, that's what I have to do. But we have to make sure that we're secure in who we are and knowing that we have a responsibility responsibility to give back. We stand on the shoulders of all those women, Merle Evers, all those who came before us, who helped kick the door open. And now that the door is open, we have to keep it open for the generation that's coming behind us.
Absolutely. And in talking about submarines, I think that's a great transition to race cars. And Nicole, you know, how, I read your bio, I was absolutely floored. I mean, you built a drag race engine yourself. I saw that. You built one by hand. Can you hear us? Oh. Okay. Well, while we're having this brief technical, oh, there we go. All right. Hi, Nicole, can you hear us? Okay. Well, we're going to figure this out. And so, during the interim, talking about breaking barriers, we don't see a lot of representation, you know, in our communities, in a lot of different areas. STEM is something is very important as we move forward in this century. And so, again, how do we encourage? What, oh. Oh. All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to reverse, pause on STEM, and let's talk about breaking barriers and trailblazing, women leading into new arenas, arenas that are historically driven by men. And so, from submarines to race cars, Nicole, I would love to hear, what brought you to a male-dominated field such as drag car racing?
Well, to be honest with you, my dad was a pioneer at his time, and a black man who was racing cars and welding motors. And I couldn't be daddy to a girl, and for us, just helping my dad in the Hudson Field and shop. And next thing you know, I was welding motors and racing cars myself. And I can actually tell you, it has been a struggle from day one to be an African-American woman in the industry. But like the parents have said, I pride myself on breaking down barriers. I pride myself on the fact that I'm the first African-American woman to complete finished nap car racing, the first African-American. A total working engine. And I could feel like I have the capability of making sure that young, the young Americans have someone to look up to, and someone that they can be confident about prior to that, and actually, you know, doing something that is rewarding, instead of like you see these shows that are negative and portraying us in a negative light. I think it's about us being portrayed in a positive light. And I mean, I owe myself and to all of us to make sure that I continue to do that out there on the race track.
All right. And Wendy, you said something while we were waiting to come onto the platform, and sexism and racism. And I was just thinking, when Nicole was speaking, gosh, to be a fly on the wall, to try and see, well, which is it that, do we have to choose either or? How do we approach this as women, knowing that they are inextricably linked often, but not really publicly acknowledged?
Shirley Chisholm once said that out of her two handicaps, being a woman was her biggest handicap, not her race. Right? So, you know, as a black woman, we have to deal with racism and sexism. And the conversation we're having backstage was, we were talking about Hillary Clinton and her potential run for president. And the discussion is, she's going to have to deal with sexism and ageism. So, then you talk about a black woman, a seasoned black woman, that now is dealing with racism, sexism, and ageism, right? But black women always rise to the occasion. I think, you know, what led me to kind of the work that I'm doing now is, I'm a 4G. So, you go, "What's a 4G?" I'm a fourth generation. I was blessed to be able to be raised with my great-grandmother, grandmother, and mother. Came from a two-parent household, but I am exactly who I am today because of those three women. My great-grandmother was born in 1895 and died shy, excuse me, for her 100th birthday. And this is a woman that wasn't supposed to have any type of education attainment, wasn't supposed to own property, didn't have her right to vote. And in two and a half generations, we're able to see all of her great-grandchildren graduate from college. She owned property and owned two businesses. She was the person that said, "You can, you know, you see that wall, you can knock that wall down." And then she taught my mother the importance of political activism. On my 18th birthday, I don't remember, my parents always gave me some jewelry, I don't probably have a lick of it left. It's either been down a drain. But the one thing they did on my 18th birthday, they marched me down the city hall and registered me to vote. And although we overperform in this last election cycle, the apathy, voter apathy within our community is still just something that we ought not to be talked about, because there are still individuals that are alive, that you can touch, that didn't have a right to vote. And people died for that right. So, the question becomes, how do we harness black women's political power and leadership potential? And that leads me to the work that I'm currently doing with Higher Heights for America. So, how do we use our power as black women to uplift and transform black communities?
And I think part of, we were talking about leadership, and you were saying your parents took you. I think we need to start taking our children to the polls when they don't even understand what's going on. But it sets in their mind, "This is something I'm supposed to do, because my parents are taking me there." You know, I know, we vote in the primary election, when there's, you know, the top ticket, but what happens in the midterm? We don't show up. And so, we need to understand that every time the polls are open, we need to show up to vote, whether it's for dog catcher, county attorney, whatever it is, street sweeper of the week. We need to show up, because they keep a tally of your voting record, in terms of saying, "We don't have to worry about them midterm, because they don't show up." And so, it is imperative that we, by our own leadership, show up and vote, and then we take others along with us. We give as much impetus and as much energy and as much power behind the messaging of, "Get out to vote," every time the polls open. And that says that we recognize our power. Going back to your original question, we don't know our own power, because they can count on us not showing up. But we need to flip the script on that and say, "Oh, the devil is a liar. We will be there, we will show up, and we will vote our conscience, and we will vote our community, and we will vote for our children."
And can I just piggyback on that to talk about the power in our numbers? And I'm going to, you know, obviously, we're talking about black women, because I'm going to use black women numbers. So, we did talk about that black women are 75% of the black electorate. Black women control predominantly the amount of money that we spend in the community. So, black spending by the end of this year is going to be $1.2 trillion. And black women control $0.85 to every dollar spent in our community. That means last year, we controlled and spent, as black women, $585 billion. $52 billion of that was in beauty aids.
There you go. There you go.
And most of that's hair. We didn't make one black woman a billionaire off of the beauty aids we spent, right? So, look at our electoral power, look at our economic power, and now let's shift and look at all of, black women are at the bottom of every social ill that there is, right? So, black, white women only make, we know there's no economic parity for women, right? So, for the $1 that we work, a white man works, a woman is only making $0.77 to the dollar, and that's a white woman. Black women only make $0.62 to every dollar a white man makes. But we're the heads of our households. We are most likely taking care of an elderly parent or an elderly family member. We are the highest incidence of breast cancer, cervical cancer. One out of six of us in this room have fibroid tumors, which will lead to infertility issues and early hysterectomies. We lost more jobs than our male counterparts in the recession.
And yet, still, we...
And we don't know the disconnect. And when you talk about the leadership gap, and again, what I do for a living is around politics and electing black women to office. Out of the 100 major cities in the U.S., guess how many black women are mayors? There are 71 black women elected to statewide offices. There's only two black women that hold statewide offices. Our voices aren't being heard in the policy areas that are most important. It is important to vote in a presidential election cycle, but when it comes to the issues that we care about, education, healthcare, the economic empowerment of communities, we need to be talking about the electoral power and those who are putting in state senate, state legislatures, city halls across this country. So, how do we shift that? So, I'm going to use one analogy, because I know Hazel Dukes is going to say, "If I don't use this analogy." So, black women, so, ING did last year, Women Across the Board, we spend, on average, $49 on a pair of shoes. Now, y'all know, that's on sale. But we definitely spend more money, or the shoes that we wear are much more worth $49. And apparently, an average woman only owns 11 pairs of shoes. I brought seven this weekend. So, imagine, in the 2012 election cycle, 10 million black women voted. Imagine if one woman shifted $49 towards our political stewardship, our community stewardship, or our religious stewardship.
Wendy, I'm sorry, I just want, I want to interject here. There is, I love what you're saying, and I still think about, there's a lot of women, when you talk about empowerment and us not using our voices, there's a whole lot of women who are not being seen. And forget about not knowing, not using their voice, don't believe they have a voice. And, oh goodness, I'm like, my hands are starting to shake. I just get, you know, I think about not those who have come from 4Gs, 3Gs, 2Gs. What about, what, no Gs. What about those of us who are completely disenfranchised, completely a non-factor, a non-factor, who don't have the support of their families, who don't have any role models in their communities? How, and now I know Renaud, you grew up in Guyana, in the midst of incredible poverty, oppression. We know that globally, sex trafficking, child sex trafficking is a huge issue. Yet, you know, aside from the occasional articles that I see in publications about black men liking to go to Brazil, or going to DR, there's no discussion about this issue that enslaves and destroys women.
That's right.
So, Renaud, how have, you know, from your eyes, I'd love to hear, because you have firsthand, you've seen it, you've lived it. How? How important is it to share our stories?
Well, for me, and my story is somewhat painful, so, I'm going to just share, just a little bit of it. I was separated from my mom at age five. My mom moved to this country, when I say separated, she moved to this country, she moved to the United States, basically, to make a better way for her three daughters. She and my father were separated, and she moved to this country. Single mother, essentially, to make a better way for her three girls. And so, she worked several jobs simultaneously while she was here, but I was left, we were split up. And I was sexually abused, I was physically abused, I was emotionally abused, I was told that I was ugly as a little girl growing up. And so, I really wasn't supposed to, wasn't supposed to be here. Just wasn't supposed to be here, because of how I looked, and I guess, no one really cared or thought that I should be celebrated or loved, and I moved from household to household. And then, I finally landed with my grandmother, who basically, who I credited as changing my life, who basically nurtured me, encouraged me, and celebrated who, celebrated me for who I was. And then, by the time I came to America, I was so committed, at this point, to debunking the notion that I was really nothing, and I was ugly, and I just used that, rather than allow it to shackle me, I used it basically to drive me. To go to school, to go to schools to excel, to celebrate me and celebrate those around me. And so, as I completed school and I transitioned into the workforce, I realized that everything that happened sort of prepared me for thinking that no job was too mini or too small. If I was asked to do something, I would do it, and oftentimes, I might even volunteer, because what that led to was an opportunity for me to learn new things, create new relationships, and build upon them relationships that served me well throughout my professional career up until this point.
One of the things that, thank you, thank you so much for sharing that. One of the things that I've seen, and I told my kids this time and time again, the way you do one thing is how you do everything. And they would say, "Mom, that's not necessarily true." I'm like, "Yes, it is. When I tell you go in there and clean that bathroom, you better clean it with a commitment to excellence, even if no one's going to see it." Right? And I think that that is something, you know, that no job too small. I have seen in the greatest leaders, it is truly, that is truly a quality of leadership, is that there's no problem for you to come together, to help someone out, to do the low-level work. There's no such thing as low-level work.
That's right. I just want to comment, and I, you know, respect Renaud and admire her, but I come from the meeting planning world, and of all the hotels in this country, there are 24 African-American general managers of all of the hotels in this country. And I say to the women, "You have to persevere. You got to play the game the way the men play it. You got to let them open that door, and don't just put your foot in there, get your whole body in there." And use women, and I am the chairman of the Coalition of Black Meeting Planners. The biggest thing that we say to our membership, especially because we are, meeting planners are mostly 85% women, and we say to them, and to our general managers, "Let us help you. Don't sit there and think that because they didn't promote you after the general manager that you have to say, 'Well, that's it.'" Uh-uh, we're going to fight it. We're going to help you, but use us. And I think that we, as women, need to understand that we can defend, we can work with each other, not necessarily fight each other, but use each other as a team. Because we do spend a lot of money in hotels, and in convention centers, and in cities, we spend enormous amount of money, but we don't look at the population that we're going to. And I have no problem, and whoever knows me will tell you, "I will get up from a table in a minute if I don't think I see what I need to see." And I don't care if you've offered me $100 rebate, or you've offered the association all these comp rooms, you've got to show me that you're committed to diversity and moving women forward. So, I think as women, we need to persevere, we need to understand our environment, and we need to understand that when we go into that room, "Don't treat me as I'm secondary and defer to the man to respond. I can respond for myself."
And following that, black women inherently have a certain amount of resilience, because we're black women. I mean, we look good sitting up here now, but if you knew our stories, our day-to-day struggle with people putting their foot on our necks, saying... saying, "You will not over my dead body," or even telling you that. I mean, I'm an engineer, and I can tell you the number of times I've been told, you, you know, when I was growing up, I loved math. You know, and you talk about, you know, the people who didn't want you. Teachers telling me, "You're a black girl, you need to find something else to like, because black girls don't do math." I said, "But, you know, again, the devil is alive." I like math, and I will do math. And I went on to be an engineer. But, but the issue is, there are so many, you're talking about elections. The election that we need to pay attention to is the school board. Because we need to see who is setting the criteria for our children. The careers that they are going to have. Our NASCAR driver would tell you, science, technology, engineering, math, those are the careers that are opening. And our young girls aren't seeing us as participating in that career path. And we need to make sure that our school boards understand and set the criteria for all of our young people, but especially, we need to say to our young girls, "You can do math, you can be an engineer, you can be a race car driver, and we will put people in front of you." Some of us need to go into our school systems, go into the classrooms, let the teachers invite you in to talk about your career, whatever it is you do. Our young people need to see your face. Other people go into the classroom, they don't need to see them all the time. They need to see us, and they need to hear our struggle also. And understand that it hasn't always been easy. Somebody did tell us that we were ugly and we weren't gonna make it. Somebody did tell me, "You will never make it as a mathematician." That's why I love to go back home and say, "Uh." But, but we can't give up. That's why NAACP and all of our organizations are so important. Romans 8:28 says, "All things work together." And so, it means the struggles that we've gone through versus all of the good things that we've had to go, go together to make us who we are. We make a good package now, but it's because of all the things that we've gone through to get here, to squeeze us into who we are now. And we don't need to keep that to ourselves. Our young people need to know, you are not going to get there without a struggle. You are not going to get there without learning how to fight for yourself, without learning how to position yourself, without learning how to speak English. And not, and not rapper's delight. You can do that when you are together. You need to articulate your words. We, we've lost the art of writing. You know, all of us are online, we're tweeting, texting, all that. So we can't even write a sentence anymore, to have subject and verb agreement. Again, that's where our schools come into play. Because those are the tools that will make the difference. You're an author, you know, you, you have to be articulate in your writing. We, we can't accept things that have sentences, participle, dangling participles, and all of those kinds of things. But again, you, you, those are the things that, that separate our young people and stop them, and they don't even understand why they've been stopped.
They don't understand that they've been stopped. And, and you know, when you talk about writing, writing was something that I actually fell into. Writing came to me because I loved books. My mother read to me at night and gave me that love. And I truly believe that it has saved my life in, in so many ways, and expanded the opportunities in front of me beyond my wildest dreams. Many, a lot of people are very surprised when I tell them that I have a ninth-grade education. I won an ADJ award, I finished ninth grade barely. Now, I truly believe that is, God, God has a plan. For me, God has a plan for all of us.
All of us, all of us.
But when I spoke of, you know, what about the girl who doesn't have anyone? We don't have any representation around them of what it means to truly be a successful woman. Not successful based upon the type of shoes you wear, the McMansion that you are renting. That, that if you look good, well, everything must be good. But that's not how you get from the bottom to the top. That's not how it works. So Glenda, I see you rubbing, rubbing. So, you know, for, for those who are apathetic, apathy is a learned trait. It is not innate to our being. How do we engage the disenfranchised? How do we get them involved in civics, in politics? How, when someone's worrying about whether or not the Con Ed is gonna cut off their power, or how they're gonna be able to get Pampers for the next week for their kid, how do you get them to think globally? Think bigger than what is right in front of their face? How do we do that? How do we show them? I know for me, having been on public assistance, having been battered, having been addicted, and sober, thank God, 18 years, facing extraordinary sexism, all women have experienced. If you're in the workforce, you know what it means to be sexually harassed. You know what male privilege is. This is not about, this is not a male bashing session, but this is real. This is real. When Anna spoke about the, you know, to, to play the game like a man, I hope that we play better. I hope we play a better game. But Glenda, how do we get them engaged?
I'm gonna get there. Rubbing, I had a lot to say. I mean, I think, going back to the, the conversation about the difference between the folk that can afford to come to a conference like this and have these conversations versus the sisters that, the sisters that is back home that doesn't feel like she has a voice. There's a couple of things. One, it's about us opening that dialogue, and sometimes, it's just being there. We still go to churches in our communities, we walk up and down our streets in our communities. And you don't realize the impact you're having on young women about just being that woman that's getting up and going to work every day, and your head up, and about taking the time and having that conversation with the sister who's at the bodega, who, or who's at, at the Target. And, and in having that dialogue and not just being so caught up in your world and what you're doing. The second piece of it is, is how do we help give that voice? We are sitting in places where we have opportunities to do that. And a perfect example of that is our untapped online potential. So black women are one of the, is, are the largest population on social media, particularly users of Twitter. And evidence of that is we have, like, trend hashtag scandal for the last year and a half, right? And for an hour every Thursday at 10 o'clock, we are live tweeting about that, that show. When we could be giving voice, and again, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but using that medium to give voice to the voiceless. And most of the women that are, are online are actually those living below the poverty line. So understand that they have a, a space. They not be, they're not invited to be on MSNBC or Fox News, but they have an opportunity to have their voice risen online. And people pay attention to, to, to online chatter and being able to increase our public debate about issues that we care about. The other piece of it is the great sisterhood. I have created a network around myself of the mothers who will tell me, you know, "Are you not wearing nylon today, young lady?" And you need those mothers. But also the sister girls, who sometimes it may just be a text saying, "Girl, you're doing a good job," or "I just saw you." So, you know, like my sister girl, Eljoy Williams, or Rosalyn, we're just like, "Girl, you were great yesterday on MSNBC." And the mothers, like the Hazel Dukes, are like, "Girl, knock down that wall. You need to be the rally rouser." So we have to make sure that as sisters, we're supporting each other. Because it is hard out here, and be, to be able to have a sounding board. Because sometimes you're so pent up, again, me rubbing my legs, where you're like, "I got something to say." And you need someone that understands your struggle or your vision, to be able to go, "What can we do?" Because one person can make a difference, but the collective really can move this, move what we need to get done to transform our communities. And this is our season, and if we don't harness it right now, I just don't know where we can go. I mean, it, every star is a line for black women to take our seats at every decision-making table there is. We just have to do that. And a good example, again, I do politics. We are not, it's not that black women aren't voting for black women in elected office, black women aren't running for office. We don't think this is a pathway that we are even projected for. Men, on the other hand, wake up and go, "You know, I could be an elected leader." They don't doubt themselves, they take risks. We are very calculated. And there's reasons why we need to be calculated if we're the heads of our households. Women have to be asked nine times to run for office. Men have to be asked once, and usually, he asks himself. So, that being said, we need to say to those two little girls in this front row, "You could be an elected leader, you can be a CEO of a company, you can be a board chair of a, of a Fortune 500 country, uh, country, company." So when we walk out this room today, when we go to the beach, when we're on the, the bus to go shopping, look to your left, look to your right, and to ask, tell a sister, "You should run for office." And at whatever level that is, that we need to have good leaders making good decisions and to step out and take a risk, ladies.
Well, and also, I think we, I think we can't be afraid to start intergenerational dialogue. Oftentimes, you know, we find ourselves looking at younger girls and, and seeing them not speaking appropriately, not dressed appropriately, but we'll talk about them to your peer rather than to that little girl. And you cannot be afraid to say to a little girl, "I think that's inappropriate." Or, I, I mean, you could do it very, very carefully and lovingly. You know, if you see a young woman just swearing, I, I witnessed this myself. And oftentimes, all that little girl would like is for someone to say to her, "You know what, you're beautiful, I care about you. You do not necessarily have," that's not the best way to communicate your thoughts or what you're thinking.
Okay, and so I, thank you Rena. So I, I saw the mic being moved around. So if anyone has any questions that they would like to present to the panel, please raise your hands, and the lovely lady here will, yes.
I just wanna start by saying thank you very much to our panelists for what they have done and provided for us this afternoon. As we began to start the questions, you saw that I was supposed to be on the stage. I decided that I would not, but I asked a woman who knew me when I was nobody, just a little 18-year-old, 19-year-old, in a large civil rights organization, and who was the wind beneath my wings. She's sitting up there, and she told you, and you laughed, that when I couldn't even vote, she signed my checks from the NAACP when I was a youth board member so that I can have my little per diem, and to make some money. But on our panel yesterday, if you heard Kimberly Ali say, "Sometimes, you don't have to say anything. It's the quietness." And my mama always taught me, is that you don't have to compromise to be recognized, and that your gifts will make room for you. Remember that. But we have to learn, as women of color, to support each other, lift up each other, and not try to tear each other down. Glenda said it, that Shirley Chisholm said, "It wasn't being a black woman, it was being a woman" that challenged her the most. Being a woman in a civil rights movement in the 21st century is hard work. But I'm so grateful that we've got a panel of dynamic women who are movers and shakers in their own right. Remember, leadership is not a title, it's an action. Your words, your deeds, and your actions show people that somebody is watching you. I see you. I see you. So I'm grateful for the stories. And Dr. Boyd said it best, "You see their glory, but you don't know their story." And I'm so grateful that you shared your story. Nicole, I wanna hear more about your story.
Thank you. My story is definitely one of trouble. Just to be in a white male-dominated field as a race car driver, semi-automobile drag racing, then transferring over to NASCAR. I've been told "no" since day one. And I tell people out there, "If you can't embrace the word 'no,' then you're never wanting to be successful in life." My, it's a powerful word, and it actually motivates me quite much to make sure that I do what I need to do. And when I'm out there driving, people always ask me, like, "Why, how do you get in a NASCAR car going from a drag racing car and do so well so soon?" And it's like, because I feel like every time I'm out there, it could be my last time out there, because I don't have the support of the other white drivers and their families who are rich. I didn't come from money. My parents, we financed homes to make sure that I could have my first race car. We came from the inner city, from the hood. So this, the outcome for me means a lot. It means that I'm giving back to my grandmother, my father, my, you know, my mother, everybody else that has remotely backed me in this world of just saying encouraging words to me. So my struggle is very real, it's still real. To be the first black woman to complete a NASCAR race, and the world probably doesn't even know that, it's extremely hard to deal with. But we all know about the anti-racism, you know? So I drive, I give my life to my creativity. I get out there, like you said, you know, I don't have to be like, "Pump me." I come hard, and the reason I come so hard is because the struggle is so real. And I don't have time to let some guy tell me that "I'm not going to be successful," or, "You're crazy, maybe you should stand by the car," or whatever it may be. I hear it all, I've heard everything from the most racist comments you could ever imagine racing in the South, and dealing with being, you know, the only black woman looking at the feet of white men, and, you know, white women, and not seeing one face that resembles me out there on the track. It's extremely hard to do, but it's also very empowering. And also, what drives me to make sure that my voice is heard and it's heard racing. I definitely hold my own. I'm successful to this day because I hold my own. And, you know, like you said, like the panel said, we can do whatever, and that, and science, and technology, and the whole engineering aspect is beginning over. I have no, I have no engine, I have my own car, I have a little car ready to be shot. I have cars, I'm enjoying it. I'm determined to change the world through, through my ideas of racing. I'm determined to be that face that one day, you know, you're gonna turn on your dream, and you're gonna be like, "That girl right there, she changed the world with her craft and her knowledge." And I tell people all the time, when you're trying to deal with obstacles like I do out there on the track, the only way to go around obstacles is to be knowledgeable. So when people come up to me, they can't, I know everything about these cars. You can't come up and just talk to me any old way. I know what it is I'm talking about, I know what my car is about, I built these cars. So at the end of the day, knowledge is what earns me the best.
And thank, thank you. Now, do we have any questions for the panelists, anyone?
While, while they're waiting, I just want to agree with her, and talking about knowledge is power, when she said, "Nobody can tell her about her car, or any aspect of the car." And just, you know, signing on to that, when I got on my first submarine, I had gone to sub-school, I'd done everything all of the others had to do. And then, you know, you walk onboard, and they said, "Is there a tour coming?" Or you, I said, "No, I'm going with you underwater." So you, again, as she said, you have to stand in your own authority and know that you know that you know that you know that you know what you're talking about when you enter the room. No matter what your career, chosen career path is, because again, you're standing in the authority of all those women who are pushing you from behind to the authority of all those women who are pushing you from behind to say, go, girl, you can do it. And we can't relinquish that. And as we were saying to these two young ladies up front, we need to tell them, you're going to be the president of the United States. Yes, you are. You know, there is nothing that they can't do. But again, it's the, it's the power of the collective as well. And when we talk about the NAACP and all of our organizations, yes, we can individually change the world, but the collective can change the universe if we decide to work together and make that happen.
Any other question?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am so thankful for the strength that you all are just transferring into the audience right now, and to all the women that are around the world. My question is, when you kind of get that opportunity to finish high school, finish college, and then you try to go back and help those young women that may be in alternative schools, or, you know, don't necessarily have the same access or resources, how do you reach them when you're kind of an outcast at this point because you tried to do something that, you know, you thought you should do with your life, and they may not have had the same resources? How do you reach back to them and try to connect with them so that you, they understand you're just trying to help pull them up too, so that they can go back and help someone else?
Many of our churches, you know, you could tell I'm a preacher too. I got lots of careers, you know, I use all the gifts God gave me. But we have, the NAACP has youth groups. There are many opportunities to go back and reach young people, and it will start with one or two. Because first of all, they have to find out if you're real. They have to determine if you're authentic, or if you're just trying to do something to pass your time, not to waste their time. And so, once they determine that you're real, then they'll share with their peers, she's for real. So you come, and then they're going to bring two more with them, and then they're going to bring two more, and you'll see the group grow. And then they'll start to trust you. But you can't engage young people until they know they can trust you. And so, once you do that, then they will come, you know, like, what is it, like, what is it, Flies to Honey, you know, whatever it is. You know, they, when they know they can trust you and that you are there for them, that you're, you know, it's not just a checkmark on a sheet that you have to say, I've done this and I've done that. But when you're genuine, and you're not looking for outside credit, you're not looking for somebody to call your name because you work with this group, it's because I care, because somebody reached back for me. And there but by the grace of God, I wouldn't be here to be able to talk to you today. So it's my responsibility now to go grab somebody, like you said, somebody who's just cursing, make it up words, you know? To say, sweetie, can we talk? Can we talk? And really, that's an outcry. They're saying, somebody come rescue me, somebody come help me. But, you know, we don't want to do that.
Dr. Boyd, that is so important, that to be able to reach out without an expectation of any acknowledgement in kind. I wanted to add that one of the things that I've found has been instrumental in my work has been transparency, authenticity. When, I don't trust the adults. I remember when I was a kid, I was the troubled kid. I was, I could have been on the Jerry Springer Show, gone to like the bad kid boot camp. Like, I was that girl. And it was the adults who didn't act like they had it all together, who were perfect, who'd never been through nothing. I never had sex when I was a teenager. It was people who kept it real. And I think that ability, you know, just to see how Rena's story touched the audience, how there was an opening in our hearts and spirits, that's how it is here with us adults. And the same thing works with kids. And I think that we as adults, and as adult women, need to let go of the shame that we feel around the challenges and the mistakes that we've made growing up, and say, look, you're not the only one who got pregnant accidentally. You're not the only one who made a bad decision about going to school or not going to school. I've done it too. And this is how I overcame. And this is how, I'll stand here, I will stand by you, I won't judge you. I'll accept you and love you until you can love yourself. And I think that, that is a big part.
That's a big part. And then they know that, and then you say to them, and you show by your consistent support, because they need to see consistency. You know, you don't show up this week, and then they don't see you for another two months, you know, but like your consistent support, that you're there to help them. And that's why I say some of us need to stay in those senior positions, because we can open up internships for them, we can get scholarships for them, we can provide opportunities for them. So that's why some of us need to stay there to open those doors for them. But we got to be consistent when you're working with young people.
Yes, thank you. Question?
Hi. I thank God for allowing me to come here today. I thank God for my sister, Ms. Brown, who asked me to come here. I'm standing as a mother, and I don't know who've gone through this, but I had a son who the world gave up on, but with prayers and perseverance, I kept praying for him. And he went through tech school, graduated summa cum laude, top of his class, and has a degree in electronics, surveillance camera, alarm system. But I'm out of South Florida, out of Miami, and whether you know the statistics there, we are now the minority and others are the majority. And because we don't speak Spanish, it's so hard. So what do you say to a mother who's made the sacrifice to help her child get there, and doors are continuously slamming in their face?
Well, for, for, I don't know. I'll just say, for all of us, well, for myself, let me speak for myself. Doors have been slammed in my face, you know, not because I didn't speak Spanish, but because of what I look like. And so, it means that for every door that's closed, there has to be, if we believe God, there has to be another door that will open for us. And so, and it may not come immediately, it may not even come through the channels that we're looking for. But if we trust and wait for that open door, it will come. And so, we have to just stay steadfast and know that that door, you know, we're looking over here, but God says, I will expand your territory, so you need to start looking over here. And again, have your son use all his, all his gifts and all the talents that are available to him. And that's for all of us. Don't pigeonhole yourself. Know that there's something greater for you, and you just have to stay steadfast. All of us, I would believe, if we could tell ourselves, had doors slammed in our face, but we just stayed steadfast that there was another door.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to address a couple of areas. I know, I mean, we're talking about being a twenty, a woman of the 21st century, but I'd like to bring it a little closer to home. When we think about, you know, how women can be heads of corporations and so on and so forth, and be in very powerful positions, but coming home, there's still that male-female relationship that has to be dealt with in dealing with men who may be intimidated. And then also, the other thing, and I'm glad you mentioned that you were a minister, is that in the church, you know, traditionally, it's the women doing the work and everything, but the leaders tend to be male-dominated. So I'd just like you to address those and how we navigate those two areas of our lives.
Well, I can't, I can't address the first one because I'm not married, so I have to let somebody else. And that's what I'm saying, I can let somebody else do it without. And there's probably a reason I'm not married. I've heard that word, you intimidate me, and I'm like, if you got to say it out loud, don't even come down this path. Anyway. But, but let me do the minister part. You're exactly right. Women make up 90, 95-plus percent of the congregations, but we are only 2% of the leadership in our churches. And it means that there's time for a change. And again, when Roz was talking about the fact that we have to support each other, and when you have the opportunity, you know, when you're voting on who's going to be your next pastor, we, you know, when we tell, you know, in the corporate environment, we say we have to have a broader pool. Tell the deacon board, the trustee board, whoever's in charge, we need a broader pool. There are women who are, who can preach the walls down, who can preach the horns off of Billy Goats, and have the administrative power to run a church. But we've got to change our mindset. Are we ready to be led? And see, that's, that's the piece that we have to acknowledge among ourselves, that there are women, your chairman is a minister, okay? She can preach the horns off of Billy Goats, okay? I know that for myself. I ain't telling you what I heard, I'm telling you I know for myself. But we have to acknowledge that, and we sometimes have to challenge the leadership and say, you know, we want to do greater things. Well, we look at the issues of domestic violence and talking about sex trafficking. You know, I was having a conversation, I said, when was the last time we heard any statistics about domestic violence in the church? The reason we don't is because some of the leadership is involved in something, and they don't want to talk about it. Somebody on the deacon board, so we ain't going to talk about that. But as women, if we are 90% of the congregation, we have to demand that something is done, that we have a program on domestic violence in our church, that we have some kind of opportunities for women, and just take an issue. I'm just talking about domestic violence, but any issue. And so, we have to demand our place. Nobody is going to just come up and say, oh, I'm going to give you rights, and I'm going to give you responsibility, I'm going to give you leadership. As we've said, leadership, you know, it is, is an action verb. You know, whether you hold a title, or, you know, I'm the grand poobah of the poobas, it doesn't matter. Are you able to get things done? And when people know that, then they will pay attention to you.
And personal powers, you don't ask for it, you take it.
You take it.
You take it. Now, Anna, I think you could answer about navigating home life and responsibilities as a spouse as well.
Yeah, I, it's been difficult, but I've had to sit down with my spouse and explain to him first what I do, because I don't think he understood what I did for a living. And we had to, in the beginning, he thought it was my responsibility to come from work and cook and clean, and I had to do a little tweaking and let him know that I don't mind doing it, but at some point, you're going to have to do it also. And so, once he got used to that, it's great. If I don't, if I come home and I don't want to cook, he's already cooked. But I think that we grew up believing that my, I grew up believing that our responsibility as a woman was to have children, go home, and take care of your man. Well, that only worked for a little while, because I became a single parent, and I had to work, I had to raise a child, I had to pay rent. And so subsequently, when I got married, I think my husband thought that we were still back there. And I had to, it was a little toughing, you know, tough going, but we are now at a point where he understands that it doesn't work like that anymore. It's a partnership. So if you want to be my partner, then it'll work out fine. But I think it's an understanding of that we are both equal. You're not here, and I'm here. Because if I don't want to wash clothes, I'm not washing them. But if you want clean clothes, then I suggest you put them in the washing machine. And just wash them and dry them. It's not that kind of thing anymore. But we've become partners. And so, once you become partners and you have a mutual respect for what both of you do, and what you both bring to the table, because I bring it to the table, just like you do. So it's not like you are, I think that we as women have to understand that we bring to the table, we have something to offer. And so, and you choose your partner that is going to be your partner, and it'll work out fine.
Now, we have a, we have a question over here?
It's our last question?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, from a man.
Yes, from a man. Definitively so. And yet, and still, the question I think is one that is appropriate. What I do in life puts me in a position where consistently I make decisions and I lead, I'm a pastor. And yet, and still, I also recognize that if I'm leading and nobody's following, I'm just taking a walk.
Yes, you are.
So consequently, I'd like to understand from you, what can we as black men do to assist you in the process of becoming not what I want you to be, but what you design to be?
We're taking, no more questions, no more questions.
Oh, my! Now, let me tell you, give this man a chair up on this stage.
I know, that's right. But the fact that you ask that question is the good thing, because men have to be willing to listen to women. You know, not, not listening and already framing your answer, but listening to our hearts, and listening for who we are as co-creators of God. You know, He created male and female. He didn't create male and female. He created male and female. And acknowledging that we do have gifts, we do have talents, that we are created in the image of God. We have desires, we have things that we want to happen, you know, again, we have hopes and dreams, I heard that, you know, thank you, Holy Ghost. But we have to make sure that, you know, we are, that we are aligned and understand that we're not here as anybody's stepstool, we're not here, you know, to be somebody's doormat or wash somebody's clothes. We are better than that, and we can be greater than that. But the first thing, as your question indicated, is for men to be willing to listen, and not judge, not try to put us in our place and all of that, but to know that women are great and powerful in their own right. We have gifts and talents that God has given us that we want to exercise. There's great potential in women. We can do great things, and we just want to unleash them to the world, and if we can be good partners with us, we're ready to go.
I mean, I think men, and particularly brothers, you recognize the power that black women hold. So again, you know, women, we don't recognize that, but our brothers do. So I think what can be helpful is you helping to unharness that leadership potential within your mother, your grandmother, your partner, your daughter, your sister. When I took a sabbatical three years ago, trying to determine what my next step was going to be, and part of it is, when you're so busy, God is talking to you, but you're so busy, you can't hear Him. And out of, my brother was like, you need to sit still. And I sat still for six months and literally heard God speak that my next step was around engaging and empowering black women. And even then, I was still like, I don't know, I don't know, I don't think I heard Him. And my brother was like, you know you heard Him. Go back and sit still. And he's like, your problem, and again, this is a man in my life, said, your problem is, you know, you are a calculated risk taker, because my thing is, if I'm not going to do this, you know, I like the money that's coming into my household, I like to shop, I like to travel. And he was like, you are never going to reach your greatness unless you step into the darkness. Right? So the men in our lives can help us achieve more than, you know, we ever thought could be achieved. So about surrounding ourselves with the sisterhood, but also the support of the men in our life are extremely important.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to close it out with an analogy, we've all been to the circus, yeah? And you see that guy, you know, leading animals, you know, they have the lion on a leash, they have a tiger on a leash, and then they have an elephant, and a little guy leading an elephant around with what looks like a piece of dental floss. You've seen it? And the elephant just walking obediently behind this little man with what looks like a piece of dental floss. Because the only person in the room who doesn't understand his power is that elephant. Because if he just decided, he or she decided just to go buck wild, the place would clear. And so, not that women are going to go buck wild, but we need to stop being led by dental floss. And we need to understand our own power. We need to be set free, break the yokes, break the bonds, break the barrier, free ourselves from, you know, what anybody thinks that we're supposed to be, and allow that spirit within you to reach, you know, eyes have not seen.
I bet you all didn't think you'd be going to church today, right? You didn't think there was a church service? I know that our time is coming to a close. I wanted to make a quick comment and then before actually bringing on our performers again, but to the mother who made the statement about her son encouraging him, and he got this degree, and now he, living in South Florida and not knowing Spanish, has found himself without a lot of opportunities, is that when there is no way, you create a way. And social, and what I'll say is this, when I wrote my first book, well, okay, it's my only book, I'm under contract for the second, that's a whole nother story. But when I wrote my book, my agent had dropped me, I didn't have anything except this manuscript, and, but I had a vision. And what I did was, I raised the money to print it for my friends and family. Now, this is back in 2006, and to make a long story short, I ended up raising, you know, the first round was $10,000, the second round was $100,000, which launched me into the career that I'm in today. But what I did was, I leveraged the power of community. And I was willing to say, "This is my dream. Will you help me? Will you invest in me? Will you invest $100 to help me see my dream come true?" And that's how, so what I would say is to your son, have him go online. Use crowdfunding, social media, put his dream up on a website, and promote his business. Become a consultant. I know that there, even though there, you do tend to have to be bilingual in South Florida, the internet allows you to go global. He can do, he can sell his services and hawk his wares all across the world. So don't allow the barrier in front of you to stop you and to, again, use all the technology at his disposal to create the path that he wants. So now, I guess at this point, we're going to, we're going to pause and bring out our performers. Can we please give a round of applause for Chloe and Hallie?
Hi, kids.
Hi.
Hello, everybody. Oh, this was so lovely. Like, we learned so much, and we just enjoyed it. Did you all enjoy what they were talking about?
I did.
First of all, we would just like to say thank you to you five beautiful women. We have learned so much just by sitting in here for these little short minutes, and we just wanna say thank you so much. Because we will surely take this information wherever we go. Definitely. And so what we learned today is that if we all come together as beautiful, black, strong women, we can change the world. It just starts with ourselves, and once we reflect that out, we can change the world. And that is exactly what this song is about, changing the world, one person at a time, starting with ourselves, and we can do it. And that's what we learned from these lovely ladies. So we wanna say thank you once again. Thank you. So Hallie is setting up her guitar. Yes, we both love to play our instruments, and we just loved performing for you all. So beautiful today. So here we go. Hope you enjoy. We can, we can, we can. We can, we can, we can. We can, we can, we can. We've got the world in our hands. Now we're gonna start a new day. I saw my feet hit the sidewalk. Now they're gonna make their own way, yeah. We are not on our own, on our own. We'll share this moment, 'cause we can, we can, we can, we can change the world. With every footstep, we're taking a journey. Gonna do the little things, the big things, everything we can, 'cause we can change the world. What's your name? Won't you stand out? Turn it up, it's time to play. If you want it, then you got it. If you want it, then you got it major. We grab the microphone, microphone. We're gonna hold it. 'Cause we can, we can, we can, we can change the world. With every footstep, we're taking a journey. Gonna do the little thing, the big thing, everything we can, 'cause we can change the world. We can, we can, we can. 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 We, we got it. We, we got it. We, we got it. We, we got it. We can, we can, we can, we can change the world. With every footstep, we're taking a journey. Gonna do the little things, the big things, everything we can, 'cause we can change the world. Thank you. Now, this next song is one of our favorite songs ever, and this would be dedicated to all of the beautiful women in this room. And we are just so happy to sing this, we love it so much. This is called "Girl on Fire" by Alicia Keys. And Chairman Rosalynn Brock, this is for you and all of the other strong, beautiful women in here. We appreciate all of you, and you all look so beautiful today. I can't stop saying that. And we hope you all enjoy this, because we are on fire. I promise you guys, we are on fire. Yes, we're independent, we're strong, we're on fire. So we hope you enjoy this song. She's just a girl and she's on fire. Hotter than a fantasy, higher than a highway. She's living in a world and it's on fire. Living in catastrophe, but she knows she can fly away. She's got her head in the clouds and she's burning it down. She's got both feet on the ground and she's not coming down. This girl is on fire. This girl is on fire. She's walking on fire. This girl is on fire. Looks like a girl, but she's a flame. So bright, she can burn your eyes. Better look the other way. And you can try, but you'll never forget her name. She's on top of the world, the hottest of the hottest. We got both feet on the ground and we're burning it down. We got our heads in the clouds and we're not breaking down. This girl is on fire. This girl is on fire. She's walking on fire. This girl is on fire. She's just a girl and she's on fire. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Have a beautiful day.
Let's give it up one more time for Chloe and Hallie. It is such a pleasure to be here and to witness yet another successful, exciting, exhilarating town hall meeting. Let's say thank you so much for our moderator, for Nicole Glenda, Anna, Renaud, and Gwen. Come on, y'all. It has been a phenomenal time for us, and we want to make sure, and I gotta say something to Reverend Alonzo Lawrence, you brought it home on behalf of the brothers, and we are grateful to you, because we understand that in this life, it is a partnership that we work together. And I thank you so much, Reverend Gwen Boyd, for speaking on behalf of the women and putting the Spirit of the Lord in this place, that we live together in unity and partnership to be all that God has, all that He has for us to do. Now, friends, it is your time now. Until 7 o'clock PM tonight, we wanna see you back at the ballroom for our closing dinner, where my co-founder, Michael Turner, will lead us tonight for our closing dinner. We want you all to have a great time, we wanna start on time tonight. And so as you leave this place, I think my sister said the prayer at the breakfast this morning, you do you, and you have a great time, but hurry up and come back so we can continue to go yet around higher. Every session just goes a little higher. Once again, let's thank you to this beautiful town hall panel around the subject of the 21st century woman. Come on, y'all, you can do better than that. Go forth in peace.
We've been gone for the okey-dokey.
Okay.
The bride think we don't know how to get down. Come on, let's have a meet. Girls, let's have a meet.